It's great to be with you all today. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Tuesday, July ninth, twenty twenty-four meeting of the Denton County Commissioners' Court. At this time, I'd like to welcome our very own Commissioner Bobby Mitchell for Commissioner Precinct Three is going to lead us in our invocation and our pledges will be led by Michelle French, our tax assessor-collector. So if you'll please remember to turn off your cell phones and please stand.
Almighty God, Lord, we thank you and we give you all the glory and all the honor and all the praises. Lord, you are so worthy to be praised. Lord, we have been the recipient of the choices, penalties, the blessing, Lord. We have been preserved for many, many years, Lord. We have prosperity and peace and loving kindness, Lord. We thank you for all that you do for us, Lord. Thank you for being a loving, kind God. Lord, you are a good, kind God, and we thank you. We give you glory and honor and praises, Lord, for all the many, many blessings you've given us, Lord. You are our ultimate authority, Lord, and we come to you this day asking for your help, Lord, in the name of Jesus, Lord. All kinds of things are going around in our nation, Lord. We ask you, Lord Jesus, that you will shower down on us, Lord. I pray for the government of our country, Lord. We need your help, Lord. I pray for every person that's in authority, Lord, that they be led by your Spirit, Lord. Give us wisdom and knowledge as we go in and among your people, Lord. Let us do your will and not our will, Lord. In the name of Jesus, we thank you this morning. Thank you for all that you do for us, Lord. Thank you for families, Lord. Thank you for making ways when we don't see no way, Lord. Lord, we thank you for opening doors that have been closed, Lord. Lord, we ask if you touch us right now, Lord, all of us that gathered in this Commissioners' Court, Lord, and all around the earth, Lord Jesus. Enlarge our resources, Lord. You know what we need and how we need it, Lord. Have mercy, Lord Jesus. You are burden bearer, Lord. You are heavy load sharer, Lord. You are promise keeper, Lord. You are way maker, Lord, and we lift you up this morning, magnifying your name, Lord, thanking you for being so good and so kind and so merciful, Lord. Lord, we need you every step of the way, Lord. Have mercy on us, Lord. Go into the hospital room, convalescent room, sick rooms, Lord, everywhere, Lord. Touch healing and deliverance, Lord, in the name of Jesus, Lord. Somebody may be sick in their body this morning, Lord. We ask if you heal right now, Lord. Somebody may need a financial blessing today, Lord. We ask if you help right now, Lord. In the name of Jesus, as we come into these hot seasons, Lord Jesus, we know that there are people, Lord, that are outside, Lord Jesus. We ask a blessing for them, Lord, each and every one of us, Lord, that have a little bit more, Lord. We ask if you give, Lord Jesus. Let us give, Lord, in the name of Jesus, Lord. Thank you for what you've done for us, Lord. Thank you for pouring us out a blessing, Lord. We don't have room to receive it, Lord. Lord, I lift you up this morning. I magnify your name, Lord. Lord, there's none like you, Lord. Thank you for being so good and so kind and so merciful, Lord. I ask that we make decisions, Lord, according to your rule, Lord, not our rule, Lord. Let us go in and among your people, Lord. Treat them like they we want to be treated, Lord. Have your way, Lord Jesus. Have mercy on us, Lord. Fill us with your virtues, Holy Ghost, Lord. Thank you for all that you do, Lord. Ask you, Lord, if you enlarge our resources, Lord. In the name of Jesus, have mercy, Lord. Somebody's crying out today, Lord. They need help, Lord Jesus. I pray for your help, Lord. Come in this room, Lord, in every room, Lord Jesus. We thank you and we give you all the glory, Lord. We give you all the honor and all the praises because you are worthy to be praised. Lord, I lift you up and I magnify your name. Thank you, Jesus. Bless this court, Lord. Bless their families, Lord. Bless the families of ones that are gathered here. Bless our families everywhere, in your son Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Jesus.
If you'll join me in the pledges, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Oh, my gosh.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Mitchell, and thank you, Mrs. French, for being here and providing that. At this time, I'd like to go to item one, which is public input for items not listed on the agenda. We have one registered speaker today, and I'd like to welcome Jeff Gilmore. Good morning.
Morning. How are you today?
We're doing great, sir. How are you?
I'm doing well. I make twenty-seven years in Denton County come the end of August, and I've been in and I've been deployed four times, combat one to Bosnia, and I've been on many hurricanes, and I'm actually at the Texas border right now, and I just wanted to come by and say thank you, and I appreciate all your support for me and all the men and women in the military. So what I have for you is a card and a coin from my MP battalion, just to say thank you.
Oh, Jeff, well, frankly, all the thanks is all ours. Thank you for your answering the call to public service. So thank you. Thank you. You make, yes, absolutely. You make us very proud.
Many years, so I appreciate you really.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you so much.
That's right.
Thank you. Oh, those are beautiful.
I remember that day.
Kind of, kind of, kind of makes ours look a little small, doesn't it?
Yeah, that's beautiful, isn't it?
I know. I love that.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate everything you do for us. Yes, sir. Thank you so much. Very thoughtful.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for what you do.
And be careful.
Always.
Be careful out there. Thank you for representing the county so well, Jeff. That's great. Remember Bobby when we were visiting with his wife when, hey, when we were, the whole family serves.
Somebody asked me about my flag. I had been that thing.
Oh, yeah, I remember that. That was good. All right. Let's go to... I'll go ahead and do our public hearing, then we'll go through, proceed to the rest of the agenda. Let's go to item four A, which is a public hearing at nine AM on July the ninth, twenty twenty-four, for the replat of the Ridgecrest North Phase Three replat lots fourteen R one, fourteen R two, fourteen R three, fourteen R four, fourteen R five. This is Block A. This is twenty-two point one five acres located in Commissioner Precinct One. Do we have a motion to open a public hearing? We have a motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Is there anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to the replat of Ridgecrest North Phase Three? Is there anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to the replat? Hearing none. Is there a motion to close a public hearing? Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Do we have a motion for approval by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer? Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Let's see. There's any other presenters? Members, let's go back to item two. Is there any items you would like to pull off the agenda? Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Our consent agenda today consists of item two A, approval of order-making appointments. Item two B is approval of the interdepartmental transfers. Item two C is approval of budget amendment request one zero one six seven zero for the AgriLife Extension Department to transfer five thousand three hundred five dollars from training and education to official travel employee and a hundred fifty dollars to hospitality supplies for a total of five thousand four hundred fifty-five dollars to cover travel expenses, conference calls, and the upcoming leadership advisory board meeting. Item two D is approval of budget amendment request one zero one six eight zero for the County Criminal Courts Number Three to transfer eight hundred twenty-eight dollars from wireless services with a hundred sixty-six dollars to technology software services, six hundred sixty-two to court-appointed attorneys and four thousand from veterans' court expenses to court-appointed attorneys for a total of four thousand eight hundred twenty-eight dollars. Funding is needed due to the increase in cost of software used by the court reporter and to cover anticipated expenses for the remainder of the fiscal year. Item two E is approval of budget amendment request one zero one six nine zero for Constable Precinct Six to transfer seven thousand one hundred thirty-five dollars from various lines to body armor to cover the cost of replacement ballistic equipment. Item two F is approval of budget amendment request one zero one seven zero zero for facilities management to transfer twenty-eight thousand dollars from various building landscape expenses to line items to horticulture irrigation expenses to cover the disposal and placement and replacement of storm damaged trees. Item two G is approval of budget amendment request one zero one seven two zero for the County Clerk Records Management to transfer seven hundred three dollars from administrative supplies and five thousand from technology equipment to computer services for a total of five thousand seven hundred three dollars of funds we use for Records Department remote birth access for the Texas Department of Health Services and anticipate expenditures for the remainder of the fiscal year. And item two H is approval of budget amendment request one zero one seven three zero for the Criminal District Attorney to transfer three thousand five hundred dollars from evidence expense to postage to allocate funding for the remainder of the fiscal year. Pardon me. Item two I is approval of budget amendment request one zero one seven five zero to transfer ten thousand five hundred dollars from the Public Facilities Department landscape expenses to service contract to fund the annual maintenance repairs for the fire extinguishers in various buildings. And finally, item two J is approval of budget amendment request one zero one seven six zero for the Sixteenth District Court to transfer eight hundred seventy-three dollars from administrative supplies with seven hundred sixty dollars to administrative equipment and a hundred thirteen dollars to technology equipment, five thousand eight hundred from court support mediation services, and four thousand two hundred from substitute court reporter to miscellaneous ordered expense, one thousand seven hundred twenty-five dollars from visiting judge to family court miscellaneous court ordered expense, and four thousand three hundred fifty-seven dollars from statement of facts psychiatric services for a total of sixteen thousand nine hundred fifty-five dollars. Funding is needed to purchase a new chair in the judge's office, purchase equipment that was lost during the flood in the courtroom, and allocate funding for court-related expenses. And item two K is approval of the July nineteenth, twenty twenty-four payroll. We'll do three A at the end of the meeting. Let's go to item five A, approval of the bill report payments from CSCD Community Corrections, TAIP Sheriff's Training, Sheriff's Forfeiture, VIT Interest, NDA Forfeiture Funds are presented for recording purposes only. Hello, good morning.
Morning. We have two additions this morning, both the Citibank totaling three hundred and fifty-three thousand thirty-five dollars and eighty-three cents.
Perfect. Members, do we have a motion to approve the amended bill report? Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six A, approval of change order number one of SailPoint Deployment Services from Charisoft in amount of one thousand three hundred fifty-eight dollars and ten cents using ARPA funding through the Texas Department of Information Resources, DIR Cooperative Contract, DIR TSO four two eight eight.
Any approval? Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six B, approval to declare equipment and a vehicle as surplus advertised on place at online auction two four two eight two five to be held July twenty twenty-four.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six C, approval of the specifications of authority to advertise RFP two four two eight one eight, painting, staining, and transparent finishing services, and appointment of evaluation committee to include Chris Matheson, Facility Division Manager, Austin Wells, Facility Division Manager, and Brian Townley, Contract Program Manager. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six D, approval of specifications of authority to advertise for RFP two four two eight two zero, emergency bulk drinking water services, and the appointment of evaluation committee to include Mark Bonnet, Division Chief, Homeland Security Victoria Garner, Emergency Management Officer Two, and Paige Saucer, Emergency Management Officer Two.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six E, approval of the purchase of an elevator upgrade to include electrical and mechanical equipment modernization and cabin interior refresh for the Denton County Courteson Square from Cone Incorporated in amount of four hundred ninety-six thousand eight hundred fifteen dollars through Omnia Partners Cooperative Contract Number EV two five one six.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six F, approval of purchase of a Zemro Model three eleven Shelter from Comprehensive Communication Services LLC in amount of fifty-nine thousand one hundred dollars and fifty-four cents to the Buy Board Cooperative Contract seven one four two three. Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six G, approval of purchase of five automated license plate readers from Vigilant Solutions LLC in amount of fifty-one thousand eight hundred twenty-five dollars through the Houston-Galveston Area Council Cooperative Contract Number EF zero four two one. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six H, approval of the purchase of integration of Bonfire API catalog access from IUNA Solutions to be used in conjunction with the Workday ERP system in amount of seven thousand for one year using American Rescue Plan ARPA funding and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven A. Seven A is approval of appointing the Texas Assessor Collector to calculate and publish the no new revenue and voter approval tax rates for Denton County for Taxure twenty twenty-four. The chair move for approval, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? Anything to say, Michelle? Besides, this is your last one. She's done a lot of these. She's been doing a lot of these for a long time. Good morning.
This is my last one. We are always so happy, well, yes, we are always so happy when it comes to this time. It's a job, and it is, it is stressful, and Stacy and I both, along with our team, you know, we, we work really, really hard, not only for the county but for all of our entities, to be able to help them through this process. It is not an easy process. And, you know, frankly, some of the law changes that have occurred makes this process a little bit more challenging than what it already is. But we are, we always get through it, and we're always here to help in whatever way that we can for both the county as well as for all of our entities. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Michelle. All right, we have a motion, a second. Any other comments? All right, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Michelle. Next is seven B, approval of budget amendment request one zero one six six zero for public health to increase revenue and allocate expenditures for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five cities readiness initiative grant in the amount of a hundred forty-four thousand twenty-five dollars and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven C, approval of budget amendment request one zero one seven one zero to transfer one hundred and three million three hundred nine thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars from the twenty twenty-four permanent improvement bonds, TRIP twenty-two bond premium and bond proceeds to various TRIP twenty-two road projects, and one million forty-seven thousand six hundred forty-one dollars from the twenty twenty-four permanent improvement bonds, TRIP twenty-two bond premium to debt issuance costs, and seven million six hundred ninety thousand six hundred twenty-five dollars from the twenty twenty-four permanent improvement bonds, BSRP bond premium and bond proceeds to road projects, and seventy-nine thousand nine hundred seventy-nine dollars from the twenty twenty-four permanent improvement bonds, BSRP bond premium to debt issuance costs to allocate the funding for the issuance of the twenty twenty-four permanent improvement bonds. The issuance includes forty million seven hundred eleven thousand four hundred ninety-seven, four hundred ninety-seven dollars from, for the reimbursement for pre-funded road projects and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item seven D, approval of budget amendment request one zero one seven four zero for public health to increase revenue and allocate expenditures for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five public health emergency preparedness grant in amount of four hundred eighty-one thousand four hundred eighty-nine dollars. Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven E, approval of budget amendment request one zero one seven seven zero for the sheriff's office to transfer a total of a hundred and twenty-seven thousand nine hundred fifty dollars between various sheriff's office budgets to cover shortages and overtime cash option administrative equipment and the prisoner transport expense line items, and any additional costs for the remainder of the fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven F, approval of budget amendment request one zero one seven eight zero for the county jail to transfer four hundred eighteen thousand dollars from non-departmental unapprated contingency to cash overtime option for the budget amendment and human resources policy as recommended by the budget office, and a hundred thirty-two thousand to out-of-county prisoner expense for a total transfer of five hundred and fifty thousand. Funds are needed due to shortage of detention officers and to cover the cost of inmates housed at the Cook and Johnson County jails for the month of June, in any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion?
Yeah, I got a question, Judge.
Yes, please.
Obviously, the sheriff's not here today, but I would love to see what our cost is for each different county because I know they charge different amounts, and so I'm not sure who can get that information, but I'd like to see which counties charge what dollar amount per inmate so we can make sure we're utilizing the most cost-effective. Of course, Judge, I mean, sheriff may have a reason why he uses one versus the other. I just was, I know there's different costs. Maybe, I'm just, I just wanted to know what those costs are to make sure we're just taking advantage of the best options we possibly can financially.
Judge, yes, we do have Mary here.
I talked to the sheriff yesterday and asked him if he could also do an analysis on what the cost of, the total cost of out-of-county expenses are versus...
Just the housing?
Yeah, versus our cost.
Oh, wow.
Go right ahead, Mary.
Okay, Mary Miller, counsel to the sheriff. All of the MOUs that we have with the counties, they give us what their cost per inmate per day is, and basically the way that they use it, but we can still get it for you, but they are within each of the MOUs that the court approves every time. But they are, we pay for all of the medical that is over and above the normal medical costs, and it is whatever the county, we use, we try to use whatever county obviously has the space. And that's how they decide first. They do have a couple of counties that they prefer to use, but it is strictly on who has, has the space for us at the time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Judge.
Yep, you bet. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven G, approval of budget amendment request one zero one seven nine zero for the sheriff's office, office administration to transfer twenty-seven thousand six hundred forty-seven dollars within capital equipment to cover the purchase of an enclosed trailer and two portable tactical repeaters. Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is eight A, report from Human Resources regarding hiring actions of elected officials. This is presented for recording purposes only. Mr. Hernandez.
Judge, Commissioners, good morning. We have one new hire and one promotion in the auditor's office. We have one promotion in county clerk, one new hire in the DA's office, two new hires in juvenile probation. We have five new hires and two promotions in the sheriff's office. Four of those are detention officer ones, and we have two promotions in the tax office. That's it for this one.
Perfect, thank you. That is presented for recording purposes only. Let's proceed to nine A, approval of the Health and Human Services Commission, HHSC, fiscal year twenty twenty-five primary healthcare grant award. primary healthcare grant awarded in the amount of seventy-four thousand nine hundred thirteen dollars for September the first, twenty twenty-four through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Still move.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell. Second by Commissioner Williams, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is ten A. Approval of the plat cancellation for Saddle Ridge Estates, lots one through six, Block A, this is one hundred sixty point five one seven acres located in Commissioner Precinct One.
Moved to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously next is ten B. Approval of the request to hold a public hearing on August the thirteenth, twenty twenty-four at nine AM for the Chase Oaks replat, this is lots R, lots five R one and four A, Block One, this is fifteen acres located in Commissioner Precinct One.
Moved to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is twelve A. Approval of the Food Services Contract Renewal between Denton County, Texas and Trinity Foods Services Group Incorporated as the food service management contractor for the Denton County Jail and the Denton County Juvenile Detention Center.
Moved to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously next is twelve B. Approval of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five interlocal cooperation agreement with shared governance, communications, and dispatch services system between Denton County, Texas and the Lake Dallas ISD Police Department.
Still move.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmiston, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously next is item thirteen A. Discussion of possible action related to disaster declaration and executive order E O two four zero five two eight for severe weather and any appropriate action. And where's Samantha, is she here? Samantha, did you want to speak to this? This is item thirteen A.
Good morning.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners, thank you for having me.
You bet.
So, today, we're gonna go ahead and recommend we just move on with the disaster declaration. We have been wrapping up our recovery. We submitted all our documentation to TDM on July fifth, that's when the portal closed to collect costs. FEMA will be keeping the application portal for individual assistance. They actually, it was supposed to end July sixteenth, but they're extending it for August sixteenth. We'll still be available to help any residents apply for assistance, keep pushing this information out. And then FEMA is still working with us, they'll be here for an additional sixty days to help, you know, help the recovery efforts, but right now, everyone's focusing on the hurricanes and we've been, you know, keeping up with everything right now as far as tornadoes, so it's been about six weeks.
So, you're recommending that this expire? Okay, the chair will move for approval.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Williams, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I will say that, speaking of emergencies, I wanna send Denton County prayers and best wishes down to our fellow Texans that have been in the path of Hurricane Burl, and we already have several Denton County Fire Departments who have sent personnel down there. And so, did you want to make any report on that in addition to those comments that you were aware of?
Yes, so, actually, our county liaison officer, Lexi, has been deployed out. I know since landfall on Sunday, they've been doing great work coordinating with Houston and we know there's a lot of jurisdictions that deployed down, Flower Mound, Crum, things like that, so they've been doing great work and we're happy to help Texans, help Texans.
That's right.
And we're excited for them to come on back safely.
Exactly, good, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Judge, I have a question. Um, Samantha, I know that Lieutenant Governor Patrick, acting as governor since Abbott is out of the country, did declare an disaster emergency for a lot more counties yesterday. So, are we at all not following his lead if we allow it to expire here?
He, it was a different disaster mainly towards the south on the Houston flooding. With ours, ours is tied to several months ago, April twenty-sixth, and his last executive order was June sixteenth.
Okay, thank you, appreciate the clarification.
Good question. Okay. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next is thirteen B. Approval of one, acceptance of the right-of-way for construction agreement with U.S. Army Corp Engineers for fiber optic construction near Lake Lewisville, near Lewisville Lake, and two, authority for Kevin Carr, Chief Information Officer, to sign acceptance, and three, for any appropriate action as recommended by Kevin Carr, Chief Information Officer. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmiston, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously next is thirteen C. Approval of certification of Texas Government Code Section two zero five four point five one nine one cybersecurity awareness training compliance as recommended by Kevin Carr, Chief Information Officer, in any appropriate action. We have a motion for approval.
Second.
By Commissioner Edmiston, second by Commissioner Williams, any discussion? Kevin, did you want to say anything, are you good? Okay, you're good, all right.
Was I the only holdout, Kevin?
We, we will neither confirm nor deny.
I finished.
All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, thank you all for doing that. It's good training. Next is fourteen A. Approval of the interlocal cooperation agreement between Denton County, Texas and the City of Corinth, Texas, provide engineering, right-of-way acquisition, utility relocation, construction, inspections, and maintenance for the Dobbs Road reconstruction from Corinth Parkway to South Shady Shores Road located in the City of Corinth, City of Lake Dallas, and Town of Shady Shores, with Denton County agreeing to contribute one million dollars toward satisfaction completion of the project with funding to come from the Dobbs Road Precinct Three, Trip Twenty-two, order line item eight nine seven five seven one nine zero three zero, in any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously next is fourteen B. Approval of the interlocal cooperation agreement between Denton County, Texas and the City of Corinth, Texas to provide engineering, right-of-way acquisition, utility relocation, construction, inspections, and maintenance for the West Shady Shores Road project between Fritz Lane and five hundred feet west of Swisher Road located in the City of Corinth, City of Denton, and Town of Shady Shores, with Denton agreeing to contribute, with Denton County agreeing to contribute two million towards satisfactory completion of the project with funding to come from West Shady Shores Road Precinct Two, Trip Twenty-two, order line item eight nine seven four 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 nine zero two zero, in any appropriate action.
Moved to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously next is fourteen C. Approval of official notice exercising option to the lease agreement between Denton County, Texas and the Denton Housing Authority provide office space for the Denton County Health Department's Dental Clinic from October the first, twenty twenty-four through September the thirtieth, twenty twenty-six as recommended by the Denton County Health Director. Motion by Commissioner Edmiston, second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously next is fourteen D. Approval of professional services reimbursement agreement between Denton County, Texas and Tabor Three-Eighty Development LLC, the developer for the purpose of initiating financing associated with the costs necessary for the development of Tabor Ranch Public Improvement District, whereby the developer agrees to pay reasonable and necessary professional services provided by the consultants for Denton County related to the pit creation and review process and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Edmiston, second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously next is fourteen E. Approval of the contract agreement between Denton County, Texas and AMS Land Company LLC for the constructions and certain improvements, complicated road drainage repair with funding in amount not to exceed one hundred fifty-eight thousand one hundred fifty-eight dollars, including two, twenty-five thousand dollars contingency allowance, with funding in amount of one hundred fifty-eight thousand one hundred fifty-eight dollars to come from contract labor, road and bridge construction, order line item two zero five two two zero eight five seven zero. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Williams, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously next is fourteen F. Approval of the interlocal cooperation agreement between Denton County, Texas and the City of Frisco, Texas to provide engineering, right-of-way acquisition, utility, relocations, inspections, constructions, and maintenance for the Lebanon Road Project as a six-lane roadway between FM four twenty-three and Todd Drive, with Denton County agreeing to contribute seven million five hundred thousand dollars toward satisfactory completion of the project with funding in the amount of two million dollars to come from the Panther Creek Parkway Precinct One, Trip Twenty-two, order line item eight nine seven five six one nine zero three zero, and funding in the amount of five million five hundred thousand dollars to come from the Panther Creek Parkway Trip One, Precinct One, Trip Twenty-two, line item nine two seven five six one nine zero three zero, in any appropriate action.
Moved to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen G. Approval of the interlocal cooperation agreement between Denton County, Texas and the Town of Hickory Creek, Texas, provide engineering, right-of-way acquisition, utility, relocations, inspections, construction, maintenance for the Carlisle Drive Project from South Lake Dallas Drive to Main Street, with Denton County agreeing to contribute five hundred ninety-three thousand towards satisfactory completion of the project with funding to come from Carlisle Drive Precinct Three, Trip Twenty-two, order line item nine two, pardon me, nine two seven five eight three nine zero three zero, in any appropriate action.
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmiston, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously next is fourteen H. Approval of the interlocal cooperation agreement between Denton County, Texas and the Town of Hickory Creek, Texas, provide engineering, right-of-way acquisition, utility, relocations, inspections, construction, and maintenance to various projects as follows. Number one, the South Hook Street and Garth Lane from Main Street to Walter Street. Number two, Country Lane from Oak Drive to Wood Lake Road. Three Harbor Lane from Straight Lane to Road D. And four, Point Vista Road from two hundred ten feet south of Stamford Drive to Point Vista Estates, with Denton County agreeing to contribute four million two hundred fifty thousand five hundred three dollars towards satisfactory completion of the project with funding in the amount of one million five hundred ninety thousand dollars to come from Harbor Lane Precinct Three, Trip Twenty-two, order line item nine two seven five eight seven nine zero three zero, funding in the amount of four hundred twenty thousand dollars to come from the Country Lane Precinct Three, Trip Twenty-two, order line item nine two seven five eight eight nine zero three zero, funding in the amount of one million dollars to come from the Point Vista Road Precinct Three, Trip Twenty-two, order line item nine two seven five three five nine zero three zero, funding in the amount of seven hundred fifty thousand to come from the South Hook Street Precinct Three, Trip Twenty-two, order line item eight nine seven five seven zero nine zero three zero, and funding in the amount of four hundred ninety thousand five hundred three dollars to come from the South Hook Street Precinct Three, Trip Twenty-two, order line item nine two seven five seven zero nine zero three zero, in any appropriate action.
I'm moving through, we know second.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmiston, any discussion?
Judge, I'd like to just, I'm so happy to.
I think these items keep getting longer and longer the older I get.
Cushions in the couch, money every place we could there.
I'm happy we're getting all these bond projects done, you know, we've been, we had that bond election in twenty-two, so we're now getting on the road to get all these projects done. They're so needed in our cities, so need to get these roads done, so I'm appreciative.
I'm excited about getting these, getting these done, this would be a great, this would be great. All right, so we have any other comments? All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, fourteen I. Approval of the Contract for Engineering Services Supplemental Agreement Number Seven between Denton County, Texas and Teanall and Perkins Incorporated for the Justin Northlake Project, which will increase the scope of the project to increase PSNE phase efforts for the FM eleven seventy-one west project from eleven, from I thirty-five W to west of FM one fifty-six and increase the contract amount by five million one hundred twenty-four thousand two hundred fifty-seven dollars, raising the contract total from six million one hundred five thousand one hundred eighty-six dollars and seventy-six cents to a revised contract amount of eleven million two hundred twenty-nine thousand four hundred forty-three dollars and seventy-six cents with funding in the amount of five million one hundred twenty-four thousand two hundred fifty-seven dollars to come from the FM eleven seventy-one west, Judge, Trip Twenty-two, PI Bond Funds, order line item nine two seven three nine three nine zero two zero, in any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Edmiston, the chair will second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, we've been working on this one a long time, and I want to thank everybody for those good efforts on that, we're excited to get that. That's actually a, a new road, I mean, it's not a redoing an existing road, it's actually a new, new construction, so.
And with all the growth after, Judge, it is so needed.
It's, it's overdue, we've been working on it for how long, John, ten years? How long I've been working on that one, longer?
At least.
Huh? I don't know what he said, but.
And he's pleading the fifth.
Pleading the fifth, yeah, this has been a long time, we've been working on this one, back when I was Commissioner. All right, fourteen J. Approval of the interlocal cooperation agreement between Denton County, Texas and the Town of Crossroads, Texas, provide engineering, right-of-way acquisition, utility, relocations, inspections, construction, and maintenance of an east-west collector road between Potter's Shop Road and FM seven twenty, with Denton County agreeing to contribute eight hundred seventy-five thousand towards satisfactory completion of the project with funding to come from the east-west connector, collector Precinct Two, Trip Twenty-two, order line item nine two seven three five nine nine zero three zero, in any appropriate action.
Moved to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Williams, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously next is fourteen K. Approval of additional funding for the professional services agreement between Denton County, Texas and Pacheco Co. Consulting Engineers LLC, now Westwood Professional Services, for the Loop Two Eighty-Eight East US Three-Eighty Connector Project from US Three-Eighty to I thirty-five at a total cost of thirteen million two hundred thousand dollars with funding, with additional funding appropriated not to exceed six million dollars with funding in the amount of, in the amount of three million to come from Loop Two Eighty-Eight East Frontage Roads, Judge, Trip Twenty-two, order line item number eight nine seven four six zero nine zero two zero, and funding in the amount of three million to come from the Loop Two Eighty-Eight East Frontage Roads, Judge, Trip Twenty-two, order line item nine two seven four six zero nine zero two zero. The chair move for approval.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, we do have one added item, let's go to item sixteen A. Approval of change order number one to the statement of work between Denton County, Texas and Collaborative Solutions LLC for the Enterprise Resource Planning Software and Implementation Services, removing one hundred fifteen thousand three hundred twenty-four dollars from the project scope as recommended by Scott Arlidge, Director of Purchasing, Kevin Carr, Director of Technology Services, Jeff May, County Auditor, Cindy Brown, Treasurer, Alejandro Moreno, Budget Officer, and Tony Luton, Assistant Director of Human Resources. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmiston, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, next, let's go back to.
Judge.
Yes.
On item thirteen A, I think the court does need to take a vote to terminate the disaster declaration.
Oh, okay.
Because the language that we put in there was, would stay in effect until terminated by the Denton County Commissioners Court.
Thank you, John, the chair moved to terminate the, the executive order two four zero five two eight.
Moved to approve.
I have a motion by the chair, second by Commissioner Williams, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Thank you, John, let's go back to, let's go, before we go, let's go to item seventeen, Let's go back to, let's go, let's go before we go, let's go to item seventeen, which is updates from the Commissioners' Court, and we'll start with Commissioner Precinct One.
Thank you, Judge. A couple things, uh, obviously want to thank God for everybody getting through July fourth safe, uh, as dry as it was in Denton County. Um, we didn't have any major, uh, issues as far as fireworks and fires, um, although we did have a firework stand that went up and blazed in, in Sanger, uh, a couple days ago, so, uh, but, uh, that's okay, at least, again, no one was injured or hurt, and no real loss of property, so thank God for that. Uh, the next thing I have is Dave Campo's annual preview of the best in their division of the upcoming high school football season has been announced. Six A Guyer is ranked thirty-eighth, five A Ryan is ranked second, and four A Aubrey is ranked twenty-third, so we're looking forward to a lot of great football this year.
Perfect.
Thank you.
All right, sounds good.
Yes, football season al- almost already, all right. Already talking about it.
Kevin Falconer.
Hey, thank you, Judge. Ryan, I'm, I'm sorry to hear about the firework stand going up, but I bet you that was an exciting watch for the fireworks.
It would have been if it was at night.
Oh, was it not? Okay, too bad.
Amazing how those things happen.
Uh, okay, we've got several things still going on. Um, Carrollton has the Battle of the Badges Blood Drive on the twelfth at ten AM at the Josie Ranch Library, sounds on the square on the twelfth at six o'clock in downtown, a swim-in cinema, and that's at the Rosemead Rain Forest Aquatic Complex on the twelfth at seven PM, a lot going on on the twelfth. And then, uh, on the nineteenth, from six AM to nine PM, goodness, uh, starting early, a Carrollton Critter Scavenger Hunt, and, uh, that's gonna be, um, at the rec centers. And then, in Crossroads, we have the Crossroads Summer Market on the thirteenth and the twentieth, eight AM to eleven AM at the Crossroads Park, Art in the Park on the twentieth, nine AM at the Crossroads Park, and in Frisco, Roll with the Council, if you want to get some biking in with the city council members, um, that's on July twentieth at ten AM at Northeast Community Park. And then finally, in the Colony, the Back to School Bash twenty twenty-four, is it already getting time for Back to School? So, uh, July seventeenth, five to eight at the Colony Rec Center, and that's all I've got.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Mitchell?
I've got in Flower Mound Lakeside, Lakeside Music Series on July twelfth, eight PM to ten PM, Heroes and Records Duo at Lakeside Parkway. On July nineteenth, I had Into the Woods Musical at Morris Road, Treach Memorial Church in Flower Mound. In Lake Dallas, we still have the Lake Cities Trade Days, July thirteenth, eight AM to noon. In Louisville, Thrive Acoustic Jam, July twelfth, twelve PM to three PM at Thrive Center on Valley Parkway. Walk with the Duck on July thirteenth, eight AM to nine AM. This is a doctor-led walking group where you can learn about health and make new friends. It's free for all ages. Uh, we have the Duck Derby on July twentieth at ten AM. Uh, that's different from the, uh, Cross Timbers Duck Derby at Sun Valley Aquatic Center. Decorate your duck and race it around the lazy river. Uh, that's what I have, uh, we have, uh, hold on just a minute, Flower Mound High Robotics Team won the world competition, is now headed to Greece for the global championship award, so, um, we also have that, congratulations to the robotic team.
Perfect, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Edmondson.
Well, everybody in Precinct Four continues to be busy, even though we, we're through with our Fourth of July holiday.
I know.
And by the way, Judge, it was so good to see you and your family out at Robeson-
Oh, they enjoyed it.
-for that parade out there, that is-
Robeson has a great parade.
It has the best parade in the county as far as I'm concerned, including-
Well, I love them all the same, so I'm not gonna say that, but-
Good for you. No, it is, um-
You can, you live there.
There's just so many people who come out in their own golf carts, all decorated, and folks sitting all along that, that route. It was great, and you and your family looked fantastic.
Oh, thank you, it was fun.
We got a picture, I think. Okay, everybody in my precinct is doing something, so let's just start with Argyle. They're having the Golden Ager's July Bingo Luncheon on the eleventh at the Town Hall. In Denton, uh, in case you have nothing else to do and you'd like to learn about the curbside recycling program, they are having that on July eleventh, five thirty to six thirty at the Emily Fowler Library. They also are doing dive-in movies at the Waterworks Park, July twelfth at seven thirty. They're gonna show Elemental. In Double Oak, they continue their snack bags drop-off. This happens, uh, every first and third Wednesday, and you drop off non-perceivable food items and/or monetary contributions will be given to CCA, Petty Place Salvation Army, Open Harvest, and some LISD schools. In Haslett, they are having an adventure scavenger hunt. It doesn't say what the adventure will be, but just having a scavenger hunt, I guess, is, is enough adventure for some of us. In New Fairview, there's a free community cleanup coming, that's on the thirteenth, from eight to noon, and, uh, you don't have to pay to participate, but they'd love your help in cleaning up their community. In Roanoke, they have something called Ice Cream Floats, and I presume that's, uh, a drink with ice cream in it as opposed to having ice cream floating somewhere on a swimming pool. It is being done at their rec center, and, uh, people are invited to come from one to three on the sixteenth. In, uh, the eight, on the eighteenth, in their senior center, they're having picking and grinning, and invite, invites you, if you're a senior, to come and work on your th- uh, bluegrass skills. They also have a dive-in movie from six to nine at the community pool on the twenty-sixth. South Lake has something that's, uh, I really would love to go see, it's called the Wild Animals Show, and it's gonna be on the eighteenth of July from eleven to twelve. It says that this is best for ages five and up, so it's apparently not gonna be any of the little bunnies and puppies, and it's gonna be wild animals, and that'll be interesting. Trophy Club is having a blood drive with Carter Blood Care, July twelfth from ten thirty to four, and then Breakfast with Tiffany at Starbucks at Tom Thumb and Trophy Club is , uh, breakfast with their mayor, Tiffany, to share, uh, your thoughts and learn about community initiatives. I don't think there's time for anything else, thank you, Judge. But I have one more thing.
Busy thing, Commissioner Mitchell has one more thing.
July Food Blessings is gonna be at Corinth Elementary on this Saturday from seven AM to twelve PM, so come out and help put food in cars and talk and meet the people.
Perfect, I like that. All right, I would like to just give a couple of shout-outs to our, one of the, this is to our Denton County Four H. Those kids do such a great job, it's so fun to watch them grow up over the years as they come to court, but, I don't know, we'll see them in December, in December again, but congratulations to Blakely Bland, Hannah Davis, and Annabella Perk, and the Denton County Four H team, they competed in the Texas Four H Roundup and received second place. So Annabella Perk was recently featured on Fox Four News Good Day, she shared her melon and prosciutto salad, which helped her take first place in this year's Four H Food Show, so congratulations to them, and congratulations to Annabella in particular. And the Agora at Corinth, that was one of our tourist projects we partnered with them on, on Friday, July the, uh, twelfth, is Friday Night Flicks at the Commons of Agora. That's a great park, if you haven't been there, it is, um, it's right there off the highway by the city hall, and this is the, parks open at six PM, it's a free event, includes vendors, food trucks, crafts, and, and the movie Trolls, so, anyway, fun, fun times all over the county. I would like to go back to, uh, one of our retirement, uh, resolutions. She couldn't be with us today, but she is go- wa- watching from home. And this is item three A, this is approval of a resolution recognizing Karen Davis's retirement, and any appropriate action. This is a resolution honoring Karen Davis for twenty years of service to Denton County. The Denton County Commissioners' Court, Denton County, Texas, during a regular session on the ninth day of July twenty twenty-four, consider the following resolution, whereas Karen Davis records analyst two and her records management office has been a loyal employee with Denton County since May the third, two thousand and four, and retired on June the twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, after twenty years of service. Whereas Karen began her career at Denton County as a detention officer in the sheriff's office, and after twelve years, Karen transitioned to a records technician role in the records management department, and whereas in twenty eighteen, Karen was promoted to records analyst two, and over the last six years, Karen has provided guidance and assistance to Denton County Departments regarding the effective management of records. Whereas the records management team would like to express our sincerest thanks to Karen for her many years of service and dedication, we wish Karen and her family good luck and joy as she begins a new chapter. And now therefore, be it resolved, the Denton County Commissioners' Court, Denton County, Texas, does hereby extend to Karen Davis our sincere and grateful appreciation for her dedicated service to Denton County. We congratulate Karen on her well-earned retirement, extend our best wishes to her for continued success, happiness, and good health in the years to come. Done an open court this, the ninth day of July twenty twenty-four upon a motion made by-
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? Well, Karen, I just want to say thank you, and I'm sorry you couldn't be with us today, um, but thank you for your two decades of service, or giving of your, of your career here and investing your career here. I think Karen is a shining example of how people may start in this county in one department, and they continue on their career here and switch to another department and continue on and be promoted and train others and train their successors behind them, so, uh, we have so many people who have done that, they've moved from department to department as they advance their career, and they want, because they want to stay here at the county. So anyway, thank you, Karen, and have a, a great retirement. Any other comments? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. I would like to say that there'll be no court next week on July the sixteenth, this